Good evening, and welcome to the November Board of Education Business Meeting. At this time, we have a forum. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as it is.
At this time, can I get an approval of the minutes?
Second.
Moving to the second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Of course. We do want to share, our trustee Cavallari asked us to share that he may be absent for several meetings due to a health condition. The board, everybody wishes him well. Moving to the Board of the Superintendent.
Good evening. Welcome to the November meeting of the Board of Education. Tonight, we are going to have a report on our academic programs by the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Lorraine Ruiz. I'm going to turn it over to her.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share with you a review of the learning and achievement throughout the 24-25 school year. And the presentation includes the student achievement on our benchmark assessments and New York State assessments from last school year. I'll also talk about student achievement within the New York State Portrait of a Graduate and our framework for teaching and learning in Valley Stream 13. And then I'll share some goals and action plans that we've developed as a district in response to this data. And then some connections also to our new strategic plan for Valley Stream 13. You may remember that our framework last year was Growing Together, and we focused on areas dedicated to connectedness as a school community, engagement, and readiness. And hopefully, you see traces of this framework throughout our presentation tonight. And we aim to connect all of our work in the district to the New York State Portrait of a Graduate. Last year, it was in draft form, and then this past July, the new New York State Portrait of a Graduate was adopted by the New York State Education Department. And it includes six attributes that the state hopes that all students develop throughout their educational career and take with them post-secondary into whatever path they choose to take. It's a comprehensive vision for all New York State graduates, and the culturally responsive sustaining education is at the core of this framework. And really, the purpose of the Portrait of a Graduate is to increase the focus on student engagement and motivation, really to make learning more interesting and relevant to students, and to inspire students to think about their interests, and then possible, like I said, post-secondary career pathways that they might take. And we start that in age-appropriate ways at the elementary level. When a group of stakeholders got together to develop the Portrait of a Graduate and to revise it, these are five things that they really prioritize as a committee: flexibility and student choice, multiple pathways to graduation, holistic, well-rounded education, real-world career readiness, and the opportunity to create an equitable, inclusive education system. And although there are nods to graduation here, we are an elementary school district, but we care a lot about the transition for our students from the elementary level to the secondary level. So we talk about these ideas as elementary educators. And content knowledge remains a priority, but we also want to introduce and reprioritize our emphasis on the six competencies within the Portrait of a Graduate so that students can apply those in whatever post-secondary pathway they choose to take. The next part of the presentation is the benchmark data, and that is really focused on the academically prepared part of the Portrait of a Graduate. And I'm going to start by sharing the achievement data on the NWA assessment. So the NWA MAP assessment measures overall achievement in reading, math, and language use. And the ELA data is on the left, the math data is on the right, and it shows a comparison in the fall and the spring between the district data and the national average. So we show growth in all areas from the fall to the spring in reading and math. Specifically in reading, we are at or above the national average in all grades except grades three and five, where we're slightly below. And in the area of math, in grades two kindergarten, second and sixth grade, we're at or above the national average. And in grades one, three, four, and five, we are slightly below the national average. We also can look at NWA data in the sense of growth projection. So the NWA gives individual growth targets for each student that they can work toward throughout the course of the year. So this slide shows the percentage of students who met their projected growth in math on the left and ELA on the right, and we're looking at it by grade level. So there was an increase in growth as grade-level cohorts in the 23-24 school year. That's the green bar that you see in the middle. Growth decreased in the 24-25 school year, which was last year, more similarly to the 22-23 school year. We can look at the same information, just a little bit differently, to track students by cohorts. So as they move from grade to grade, we can track their achievement in reaching their personal growth targets. So that's what those colored arrows are across the charts. So for example, if we look at the students who were in kindergarten in the spring of 2023, 64% of those students met their individual projected growth target. When that same group of students was in first grade, 59% of students met their individual growth target in the spring of '24. Then when those students went to second grade in the spring of '25, 33% of students met their growth target. So we have some consistency in growth. For example, in reading on the left, the grade-one group, when students in grade one in the spring of '23, 47% of students met their growth target. When those students were in second grade, 45% met their growth target. And then when they were in third grade, again, 45% of students met their growth target. We can see something similar for the second-grade group in the spring of '23 in the area of math. 52% of students met their growth target. When those students were in third grade, 52% met their growth target. And when they were in fourth grade, 53% met their growth target. We also see some inconsistency in growth, which causes us to question and study this a bit. For example, in the grade-three group at the start for the spring of '23, in both reading and math, there's some inconsistency in achievement. So if we look at grade three for ELA, in the spring of '23, those students, 49% met their growth target. Then when they were in grade four, 54% met their growth target. And then in grade five, 39% met their growth target. Now I'm going to switch over to the Acadians Assessment, which we administer to all students in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. The Acadians measures early literacy skills, including phonemic awareness, alphabetic principle, fluency, phonics, and comprehension. This assessment is a little bit different from the NWA because the subtests are different in the fall and the spring. They increase in complexity because the students develop their skills across the year. So for example, in the fall of kindergarten, we administer two subtests to students: the letter-name fluency and then the first-sound fluency. And then in the spring of kindergarten, we administer the letter-name fluency, and we introduce phoneme segmentation and nonsense-word fluency. I'm happy to share more about those assessments later in the question part if you'd like. And now I'll share the achievement on the Acadians data. So in the fall of kindergarten last year, 69% of students were at or above benchmark, and 31% of students were below or well below benchmark in those early literacy skills. At the end of the year in the spring, 59% of students were at or above benchmark, 41% of students were below or well below benchmark. Again, the subtest was a little bit different at the end of the year in complexity. For grade one, 48% of students are at or above benchmark in the fall, 52% of students were below or well below benchmark. In the spring, 63% of students were at or above benchmark, and 37% of students were below or well below benchmark. And in grade two in the fall, 70% are at or above benchmark, and 22% of students are below or well below benchmark. And in the spring, 73% of students are at or above benchmark, 27% of students are below or well below benchmark. Our assessments in second grade are consistent across the year, so this is a high achievement for students to actually enter in the fall, as well as to leave second grade in the spring going into third grade. Now I'll move on to the New York State Assessment data. So New York State Assessments are administered to students in grades three through six in English Language Arts and in math. In science, there is an assessment administered in grade five, and then the NICE SLAT is administered to all English Language learners. So here in front of you is the district snapshot of the achievement data. I know there's a lot of numbers here, so I'm going to call your attention to the right part of the screen in the blue box. And this shows the percentage of students who earned a Level III or IV on the exam. Those are students who earned at or above grade level on the ELA assessment in the first block of rows, the math assessment in the second block of rows, and then the science assessment on the bottom. I just want to point out two areas of growth from the previous school year, from the 23-24 school year. So in grade-three ELA in the prior year, 35% of students earned a Level III or IV on the ELA assessment, which was an 18% gap from the region. This image shows a percentage comparison of what the students in Valley Stream achieved and what the region achieved. That's the column next to the colors there. And then the last column shows the percentage, the gap with the region. And then this past school year in grade three, 62% of third graders earned a Level III or IV, and you can see that there was only a 4% gap compared to the region. So although we were slightly below the region, that's a tremendous amount of growth going from an 18% gap to a 4% gap in grade three. Another point of growth is in grade-six ELA. You can see that we were above the region in that area, with 69% of students earning a Level III or a IV on the exam. And the prior year, 52% of students earned a Level III or IV, and we were slightly below the region. This year, we were above. And just to note, 80% of students about take the New York State Assessments in Valley Stream 13, and about 65% of students took the science exam specifically. This is our New York State NICE SLAT Assessment data. So for our Ls, our English Language learners, there are five levels of language proficiency: entering, emerging, transitioning, expanding, and commanding. And those levels of language proficiency help us to determine the amount and type of service we provide to students, as well as their abilities in language and language development. So we can see here that most of our Ls in Valley Stream 13 are expanding and commanding at 70%. So you might remember in August, I shared a Systems of Support for Student Learning presentation, and that was all of the ways in which we were going to support the areas of teaching and learning this year in response to our data review from the prior year. So a big point of emphasis is that we have regular data meetings and student progress meetings that principals facilitate with teachers so that we can be diligent in monitoring student progress in academic areas so that we can provide them with appropriate support. We have a testing as a genre unit of study, since about 80% of our students do take New York State exams, we want to support them in that process. Last year, we did have an assessment committee to review assessment practices and protocols. We also revised our master schedule to prioritize tier-one instruction and to streamline student support services. We redesigned our professional development calendar and increased our instructional coaching model within the classroom this year. We've prioritized daily sustained reading in school every day. There are bodies of research that show a positive relationship between reading volume and reading achievement, and we want to make sure that students are reading in school, and we want to support them in that process. And just today, as part of the November Journey Jocks Newsletter, parents were sent this one-pager all about assessment in Valley Stream 13 that defines assessment, that gives examples of different types of assessment, and how we use a variety of assessment to learn about all the different aspects of students as learners. And then all the benchmark assessments that I described here, that we administer in Valley Stream 13 so that parents are aware of our assessment practices in school, and so that they can talk with their teachers and principals in a way that they feel informed about their child's progress. And I just wanted to highlight some of the work that we started to do as part of our action plan in response to this work. So we have committed to celebrating a culture of reading where reading is prioritized. Many students got to choose independent reading books through book tastings at the beginning of the year. As I mentioned, we've prioritized time for independent reading in school. Students have opportunities to choose books that they want to read, in addition to the academic texts that they read as part of the curriculum. We have dedicated time in our school day to small-group instruction in the areas of reading and in math so that students get targeted support based on their strengths and areas of need. We have ongoing professional development in these goal areas, including professional development in the area of small-group instruction, especially for reading. We also recently had professional development in some of our areas for innovation with some new Lego kits that we have in our Innovation Lab. And as I said, we really strive to make a connection to the work that we do here in Valley Stream 13 to the Portrait of a Graduate. So now I'm going to move on to some of the ways in which we really committed to creating a community that is committed to connectedness and engagement with our community members and our students. So we accomplished a lot last school year. We have a lot to be proud of in the area of art. So we had our first-ever art exhibit at the Henry Waldinger Memorial Library. Our students were represented in the All County Art Exhibit at Herex High School, as well as in the NISBA Art Exhibit. So here are some of our student work that was at the All County Art Exhibit, and then our Henry Waldinger Art Show, which was a lovely event. We also have high achievement in the area of music. We were named as the Best Community for Music Education by the NAMM Foundation. Students participated in the All County Musical Festival, the Peak Festival, as well as the NISBA Solo Festival, and Music in Our Schools Celebration Month. You might see our new posters in our schools that say the 2025 Best Communities for Music Education, which is a very special designation. We had students participate in the Nassau County Games for the Physically Challenged. We also had a district-wide literacy celebration where all students and staff read Share Some Kindness, Bring Some Light, and students made a little lantern as a symbol that was in the book for kindness being a way to provide light in the new year. We had done this in the month of January, and we will start planning our next district-wide literacy event for the month of February this year. We also had New York Times bestselling author Gordon Corman come to visit our sixth graders. So we added a unity event where all sixth graders read one of Gordon Corman's books. And then we got all of the students together in the Wheeler Auditorium, and they had the opportunity to listen to Gordon Corman speak about his process as an author. And he was so kind that he then met with small groups of students and sat and spoke with them and answered their questions and signed their books. So it was a really nice event for our sixth graders to meet their pen pals from other buildings and really prepare to go to the secondary schools together. We also had a group of students from Howell go to the New York State First in Math Competition because of their achievement, and then a local celebration that Wheeler Avenue School turned 100. And we had a museum in the gym to celebrate this monumental point in Wheeler's history. In our school readiness program in the summer, we had a series of community read-alouds where we invited parents to come in to experience a read-aloud with their children. We also had a series of family engagement nights to really strengthen our partnership with families. We had an event that was focused on fostering well-being, so we spoke to parents about screen time habits, emotional regulation, the ruler approach, cyberbullying, yoga, and mindfulness. We continued with our writing celebrations for family members to celebrate our students as writers. We celebrated Family Week with a series of read-alouds and a Pajamas and Pages event. Family Week is upcoming soon, so stay tuned for information right after the Thanksgiving weekend about that. We also had our first pre-K information night for incoming pre-K families so that they could connect with the school community early on in their journey. We also invited representatives from all of the public libraries to join our event so that they could give out their cool swag and provide library cards to our families of our youngest learners, really to strengthen our community partnership and also symbolically to share how important literacy is for our young learners. This was a very well-attended event. We had a packed house, so we look forward to doing this again in the spring this year. And then finally, as you know, Dr. LaRaca has been sharing in her updates and in the Committee of the Whole meetings that we developed a strategic plan that had started early in the school year in November. We collected information from all stakeholders via thought exchange surveys and focus groups, compiled all that data, did the public presentation in April, and then really worked as a team over the summer to develop the strategic plan to be responsive to the community input. And the framework for the goals of the strategic plan are mindsets, practices, and opportunities to really provide our students with rich, engaging experiences in supportive environments moving forward, and the work of the strategic plan will guide our work for the next three to five years. And finally, as always, we want Valley Stream 13 to be a very joyful place for all people to be in: students, staff, administrators, board members, community members. We have a lot to celebrate here and a lot of happy moments, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Ruiz. Questions from the board? I just had one or two here. So I know last year, family and community engagement was a priority. Can you share some ways that you're going to continue that kind of momentum you had there?
Sure. So we had our pre-K information night earlier this school year. We have a new pre-K report card, so we wanted to invite families in to learn about that report card, and also as a way to introduce the academic and social work that students are doing in school. So Dr. Shepherd, myself, and Dr. King facilitated that in October. Family Week is coming up again, so we have some nuances to that celebration this week, which I'll be sending information next week about. We'll be doing read-alouds again. It's actually a week and two days because it's two days that, you know, the 22nd and the 23rd, so we've added two days of fun, and we're going to do a community book swap, so that will be our night event to help kick off that celebration. And then in the new year, starting in January, we're going to have a four-part learning series for families that's focused on the academic and social-supported work that's happening in the schools. So we are going to do one workshop per month from January to April, and that will focus on topics like the Portrait of a Graduate, artificial intelligence in schools, well-being, and literacy, to welcome in our families, to engage in discussion about a lot of what we've been talking about. And most recently, American Education Week was this week, so our students invited their families in to participate in Innovation Lab work, writing celebrations, civic awareness celebrations. So that's some of the work that we've been doing to connect with families.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know you've been talking a lot about teachers in the district that discuss like goals in the beginning weeks of school, and you share like, hey, the feedback you got, you know, building that kind of culture, prioritizing reading.
Sure, yeah. So a lot of positive feedback about the reading. Students received, classrooms received a lot of new classroom library books at the beginning of the year, so students have been enjoying choosing books to read during that time. Teachers also really see the value in having dedicated time in our master schedule to small-group instruction, just because there is so much value to that time, and having it set in a schedule is helpful for teachers for predictability, routines, students know the expectations. I think making changes to a master schedule always has room for reflection and growth, so we'll be doing that starting next month, actually. There's some tweaks that we might want to make just from learning in the first year of a new schedule. So teachers have given us feedback that really will help to guide our work over the next couple of months to plan for next year. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to Dr. Ruiz for a really comprehensive presentation on all the work from last year and where we're heading moving forward. And I'd just like to end my report by wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to the Education Committee. Trustee Sabatino.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to move Item One, Appointment of Special Education Teacher. Resolved, the Board of Education hereby appoints Megan Robinson as a Special Education Teacher on Step One MA for the amount listed in the motion, on four years probation commencing on November 26, 2025, and expiring on November 25, 2029.
Moved in second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I believe, Ms. Robinson. I'd like to move Item E, Education Committee as a Consent Agenda, numbers one through four. It's from bottom of page two to the middle of page three.
Moved in second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent carries.
Oh, sorry. It's still me. I'd also like to let you know that the Education Committee discussed new initiatives from the New York State Education Department, including the Portrait of a Graduate, the Literacy Briefs, and the Numeracy Briefs. We reviewed the ways in which curriculum instruction and school community events adhere to the guidance provided within the initiative documents. And we also reviewed areas the district will continue to work on based on the guidance from the Portrait of a Graduate, Literacy Briefs, and Numeracy Briefs. And that concludes the report of the Education Committee.
Thank you, Trustee Sabatino. Moving on to Business Committee. Trustee Power.
Good evening, everyone. I move Items One and Two as a Consent Agenda, which is the Treasurer's Report and the Bank Account Transfer.
Moved in second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes the Business Committee for this evening.
Thank you. Moving back to Trustee Sabatino for policy.
Thank you. I'd like to mention Items One, Policies for First Reading. There's 7365 construction safety, 8110 school building safety, 8220 buildings and grounds maintenance and inspection, 8332 staff use of cellular phones, 8332R staff use of cellular phones regulation, 8410 student transportation, and 8410R student transportation regulation. And then now I'd like to make a motion to move Item Two, Policies for Second Reading and Adoption, to approve and adopt the following policies: 1120R school district records regulation, 5500 student records, 5500R student records regulation, 5500 student privacy, I'm sorry, 5550 student privacy, 8635 information and data privacy security breach notification, 8635R information and data privacy security breach notification regulation, 5100 student attendance, 5405 student wellness, 5405R student wellness regulation, and 6240 investments.
Second.
Moved in second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the report of the Policy Committee.
Thank you. For Facilities, no update this month. We'll be back next month. If we can do Committee of the Whole, Trustee Scrugg.
Sure. I move Item K as a consent, numbers one through six, on pages four. At the bottom of page four through the top of page six as a consent.
Second.
Moved in second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you. Moving to the report of the Attorney.
Thank you. Tonight, I'll provide the District Clerk with a report regarding a matter in which our office successfully defended a Suffolk County school district in an action brought by a former- by a former Assistant Superintendent. The Assistant Superintendent had misrepresented reasons for early resignation as part of a payout, and the district there rescinded that agreement, and the court found that that was rational because the person had misrepresented the reasons why they were leaving their position.
Thank you. High School Attorney.
Me again, thank you.
Okay, Trustee Sabatino.
On Saturday, November fifteenth, Valley Stream Central High School District Superintendent Dr. Lober hosted a coffee with the Superintendent event for families and community members. These gatherings are an important opportunity for the district to listen, receive feedback, and stay connected to the needs and priorities of our families. Please keep an eye out for upcoming dates if you'd like to attend and share your thoughts. Similarly, to District Thirteen and the High School District, the arts are truly thriving. I had the pleasure of watching Central High School's performing arts students debut a really great production of Once Upon a Mattress. The talent on the stage is truly incredible, and you don't need to go to the city because we have Broadway in our backyard. South High School's theatrical troupe also shined in their participation in Chicago Teen Edition, and North's drama students delivered a hilarious and well-executed performance of the play That Went Wrong. There's truly something for everybody in the Valley Stream Central High School District, from incredible arts program to exciting sporting events, and so much more. So if you'd like to learn more or attend any of these events and support our students, and you want to get involved, I encourage you to join your local PTA or check out the website for more details and events. The next Valley Stream Central High School District Business Meeting is scheduled for December ninth at eight p.m., and you can follow the High School District on Facebook to stay up to date about everything that's happening. And that concludes the report of the High School.
Thank you. Okay, old business? Any old business on the board? New business? At this time, we have no visitors, so we get a motion from the board to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're now adjourned. Everyone, have a great Thanksgiving. We'll see you soon.